Presented.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Hello?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment this time? If not, we'll move on. Next item is Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition. April Audrey Roberts, Russell Springs Elementary School, and May Haley Dudgeon,
Dudgeon.
Jamestown Elementary School.
And neither one of those teachers could be with us this evening. Ms. Rhonda was going to give them their well-deserved check, but neither one could be with us at the board meeting today. So again, congratulations to Ms. Audrey Roberts for April and Ms. Haley Dudgeon for May.
Okay, next item on the agenda is recognition Jackie Greider, Kentucky School Resource Officer of the Year, South Region.
Well, he's Tracy. I thought he was going to get up and leave you.
There was somebody that was trying to.
He's on guard, Kelby. He said something caught his eye. Come here, buddy.
We're just sneaking out.
You all probably seen the wonderful banner we have up here in front of the guard shack. Tell you, I've known Jackie, I don't know how many years I've been here now, but he's certainly a friend. He's certainly a mentor. Everything rolled up into one, you know, those big problems that we have, Jackie's the first on the list. And I know Mrs. Dameron, we'll attest to that. I said sometimes he can be anything from a hostage negotiator to a cooldown to a mediator. But this is a lot of what you are. Talking to Ms. Devin Gobby about the trip to New York just recently, and she commented, Kelby, what a fine young man he is. And then she said, we had Colton there with us last year, and she said, I told them that Teresa and Jackie, you all have done a great job with two young men. But it's bigger than just them to Jackie. You've made an impact on all our students. You've made an impact on me. Love you, appreciate you for all that you've done. We got a plaque, so Russell County Elementary Education presents Jackie Greider in recognition of Kentucky Association of School Resource Officers Officer of the Year, South Region, Russell County Schools, May 20th, 2024. He will also be recognized at the Safe School Conference in June of next month. So if you all will, let's give Jackie another big round of applause. You know we're not going to do this and her not say a little bit about you.
I have to talk. Okay, so I showed up on the scene of my job now almost 10 years ago. And I really had a fun time writing by part of the nomination letter because I really focused on the three things that Jackie Greider taught me that's made me successful as a DPP. I kind of showed up young and green and ready to, young, I was young then. Okay, middle-aged and green and ready to kind of like be young ho. And we'd roll up on places and I'd jump out and run in places. And I was trying to get stuff done and check it off the list. The very first thing he taught me was to slow down. Because you miss some really important things, including dogs under porches, if you don't slow down. And you miss some important things in conversation if you don't give people enough chance to go back and forth and back and forth. You hear some important things that you need to know later on. The second thing I learned from him was when he gets a phone call, even if it's not anything to do with him or not his to do, it becomes his to do. And he just says, I'd be glad to. And there's been a lot of times that two or three weeks down the road, he looks at me and says, bingo. And we put two and two together because of something he did three weeks ago that had nothing to do with him and wasn't his job, but he did it anyway. And the third thing I really learned from him that has just made this job a lot easier is I have to have some tough conversations. And nobody can do that better than Jackie. He can talk to people. I have seen him telling people.
You can sell ice to an Eskimo, let's just call it.
I have seen him while telling someone there's going to be a legal charge, that he's going to walk them through that process and that it's going to be okay. And that they made a bad choice, but they're not a bad person. And that has served me well when I've tried to emulate that in my relationships with people. The funnest, probably one of the most fun I have had in my career was the day about three months ago when I stood in a parent's yard and helped him write a nomination letter for Jackie. He was so excited. He just started rattling. I just said, wait, hold on. And I put my clipboard on the back of his Harley and started writing. And I said, okay, hold on. And his grandkids were running around. And it was a single dad who Jackie has held his hand and got all three of those adult children now graduated. And now he had three grandchildren running around the yard. And that just, that reminded me of why we do what we do.
The scope of Jackie's nomination was broad.
It was very broad.
Like our sheriff, our both chiefs of police, they did a joint letter together in support of this. And we had parents, we had principals, and then I was going to central office admin. It was powerful. And it was an easy thing to do.
It was very easy. It was really easy. And so I'm just thankful. I'm thankful for my colleague. I'm thankful for my friend. I'm thankful for the worship sessions that we have in the car sometimes when we're on the way to someplace tough and we just know the Lord's going to be with us and His blessing. So I'm thankful.
She was talking about how he can still, people shake his hand. I was with him one time on a trip to take some kiddos to the Dairy Health Detention Center. And we go through the Sally Court thing where they can pull the gate behind you and you pull in. I only know that, Mr. Joy, because I'm with him, not her personal experience.
Yes.
But pull in, get those kids out, and they shake his hand. I mean, Jackie is there to put them in detention, and they're shaking his hands. Jackie has a saying, one, there's no taters where they're digging. That's one of them. And there's the second one is that good people still make some bad decisions, but that doesn't make them a bad person.
And the person she was talking about too, and of course, and has, he's been difficult to, and some of us retired out and had to deal with him back when his kids were in school too. But he can't, he couldn't read and write. And the packets sometimes we send home to parents is pretty, it's pretty thick. And I guess we just forget sometimes that everybody's not on that knowledgeable level, I guess. So he called me one time, and we're talking about it. Sometimes it can be a very strong headache. He said, can you help me fill out my paperwork? He had three kids. And he says, and very prideful, said, I can't read and write. So we set out to bring them to him. Are we done? And Miss Dameron, she'd help me. She said, we got this, we got this. And then made me the hero. And she just said, here, bring me this, and I'll help you fill it in, blah, blah, blah. He's still, to this day, and of course with that, he asked me how that went, or he said, did you get your reward? I said, I did. And I said, and he said, you know, I wanted to help you do that.
Self-syrian.
Yeah, that. I guess it's hard to put 28 years of law enforcement in two minutes. Well, I know it's, it's late. We've been a long, I've been at it since 15 or six this morning. Gar Chat guy was out and putting our stuff out. So it's been a long day, and I won't keep you either. But 28 years in two minutes, it's hard to do that. But I can say that I've had, I went through four sheriffs, and I went through three superintendents. Mr. Ford being one of those, still, still present and all, we went through that. And several, and not to, not to just give you discomfort, but several board members that's passed on. So I've done a lot of board meetings in 20 some years, all that too. But I have to say with that, they've all been on board. They've all took, it was kind of a luxury. I told, I told him, I said, I came into the system, and I said, it's kind of been a luxury for me to be here. And I said, there's a whole lot more going on than just me being here because we've got to educate them, we've got to transport them and all that. But I call myself a luxury. Things have changed since the old barnyard days. Now it's those things where the law says you got to have a superintendent, you have to have a DPP. And luxury's out. You have to have a school resource officer. And here I am, I'm old and ready to give it up. And now it's locked in there. But I say all that to say that everybody has been on board from the get-go. And all, and they've kind of let me be. It's kind of been retirement ever since I've been here. And I say that, but I do put in a lot of time. But it's been one of those where everybody has seen the need, and the community's accepted me, the boards accepted me, the staff accepted me, the students, even when they did surveys, I know they're put in there, you know, they feel safe, and they're doing all that. And they can put anything in there they want, but they do that. Watched the town show today. I was in there, and the kids was waving and hollering and all. And it's just, I don't know, it's rewarding. I haven't gotten rich out of it, but just even those that's incarcerated come back and say, you know, I wouldn't have got my education. I should have listened to you. I made some bad choices. But still, you're not a bad person. But they'll still come back. There's no amount of money to touch you with. But I say that. But I appreciate everybody that's been supportive. When I come, y'all, y'all come up, y'all go, y'all go to bat. We do it. I try not to bleed it or suck it dry. There's a lot of things that we can put on the platter that a lot of districts do, but I still think we're getting it done. I still think we're trying. We can always articulate that we're, we're doing the best we can do. That's all shut up. But anyway, they.
I want to ask, I know they're probably mad at me, but I would love if Teresa and Kelby and Colton would come up here and let's get a picture of you all with them.
I thought, I didn't know they was coming.
I make arrangements behind the scenes.
When they walked in the door, I was talking to the parents back there, Mr. Bryant. I was talking to him. I turned around, and there they are.
But I will say this, they're not as good as Texasers as you.
No.
You give me feedback back, but sometimes they don't even reply.
I appreciate, hey, listen, I appreciate all y'all. I appreciate everybody, the community, for those that are listening to us on the public. I've, I've had a great ride, y'all. It's been a great ride for me, and I appreciate it. Thank y'all. Hope I can continue on. It's, it's a, I can't, I can say there's challenging days. It is for everybody. But I, I enjoy, I appreciate y'all. Appreciate the community, appreciate staff. The staff opened me up years ago. Partnership between law enforcement and educators, it was, it was different, y'all. So when I first came on board, they either thought I was going to put somebody in cuffs, I was bringing a subpoena, or I was taking somebody with me. And they accepted that. And as time went on, it just, it just exploded. And it was like I was family. And it was perfect. And then now, of course, we're together everywhere we go, every training I'm in, I was in law enforcement training last week. It's all about, Troy was in, he's been in training. I appreciate you coming, Troy. But they, I say, they're all, everybody's still on the same track. Keeping the community safe, keeping the kids safe. Thank y'all.
Jackie Sheriff Poston asked me to tell you.
Get over and give me a big kiss.
Jackie Sheriff, Sheriff asked me, Sheriff asked me to tell you he'd been here, but he was at a ballgame with a little one.
Right, right. I've had some good sheriffs. I've had some good superintendents. If we keep them going and whoever steps up to that, I hope it, I hope it's still supportive like it is. It's, it's a good.
This is the best board we've had. This is the best board we've had.
They're still living. They're still alive. That tells how long I've been here, a long time.
And we certainly want to wish our softball and baseball good luck tonight as they begin district tournament. And I say that also because Lori Loy is the Kentucky School Counselor of the Year, and we've got her a plaque as well. But I've talked to Ms. Lori, and she's with her son, as she should be tonight. So we'll get her at another board meeting, Mr. Kazook. I need those glasses.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda items.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report. Ms. Carnes is at a immunist training, so I'll present the treasurer's report. For the month of April 2024, balance on hand at the beginning of the month, sixteen million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Total of all receipts for the month, two million, four hundred sixty dollars, three hundred ninety-nine, two hundred forty, two million, four hundred sixty thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars, eight cents. Total of all receipts and beginning balance, eighteen million, nine hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents. Disbursements for the month, three million, eight hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Balance at the close of the month, the cash in bank, fifteen million, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. General Fund Fund One, ten million, three hundred twenty thousand, ten million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and ninety cents. Special Projects Fund Two, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and ninety cents. District Activity Fund Twenty-One, negative two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and nineteen cents. Capital Outlay Fund Three Ten, one hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty. FSBK Building Fund Three Twenty, nine hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and three cents. Construction Fund Three Sixty, two million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars, forty-one cents. Dead Service Fund Four Hundred Zero, Food Service Fund Fifty-One, eight hundred, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars, eleven cents. Fiduciary Fund Fund Seven Thousand, three thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Total cash in bank of all the funds, fifteen million, eighteen, fifteen million, eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. That's just a mouthful.
It is, it is.
So there are no changes or amendments. I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Need a motion? Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Leading Lakers Fellowship.
So I'll just turn it over to the coaches. So we got Dr. Bartrug, Ms. Skaggs, and Ms. Sloan, Mr. Gobby. We've got a really unique opportunity, exciting opportunity that we want to start for the 24-25 school year. The color scheme alone will sell it.
Good evening. We are the district instructional coaches and digital learning coach at Russell County Schools. I would like to tell you a little bit about how this fellowship came about. We, as instructional coaches, noticed a need in our district through KSA and MAP data to improve tier-one teaching. And based on the IMPACT survey results, teachers were requesting valuable professional development to explore new ideas. They also responded in the survey to wanting more feedback on aspects of thorough teaching. In March, we attended a conference, KISTI, and it's a technology conference, if you're familiar with KISTI. And in one of the sessions, Bowling Green City Schools shared a program their district uses, and they were getting really good feedback from it. So we decided to tailor their structure to meet our needs in Russell County. We designed a fellowship with a mission, and it's the acronym for LEADING. Learning to empower achievement by developing innovation that nurtures growth. With support from Superintendent Ford, our curriculum team, and school administration, we present to you our Leading Lakers Fellowship.
Hello, I'm Ms. Heather Sloan. I think you all know me well. This fellowship is what Mr. Ford has spoke about many, many times. An initiative that invests in building our capacity of our teachers. So we want to educate, we want to empower, and we want to inspire our own, really develop the expertise of each one of them. So the fellowship will involve six half-day sessions throughout the year. And right now, we're looking at having one teacher per school. As funding becomes available, we would like to increase that number to two to three, if possible. And what we plan to do is incorporate research-based instructional strategies that truly improves tier-one instruction. These strategies, of course, will be framed all around Kagan structures because we are now a Kagan district, which I love. If you all, I know you all have been in the meetings, Kagan is a very, very powerful tool to improve student achievement. So in using the Kagan structures, we, we know will encourage team building, a better understanding of vertical alignment, K-12, and even more collaboration between our schools and teachers.
Chris Gobby, District Digital Learning Coach. Each session we have will focus on a technology component incorporating AI, artificial intelligence. The teachers will then be able to take what they learn from those sessions and share those tools with others as a resource in their buildings.
Rebecca Skaggs. We also want to say thank you for just sending us to those conferences because we are so thankful to learn and gain knowledge throughout the year that we can bring back to our district. But our fellowship will begin in September. We will offer those meetings once a month. We'll extend that through March. And after each session, teachers will hopefully receive that followed-up personalized coaching that will be tailored to their own specific needs. We hope that this is going to provide that professional learning for those teachers that they have asked for and the support that they need. We also hope to just build that collaborative community among our schools, among our staff, and just kind of build that close-knit family atmosphere as we meet each month. And we think it'll be really exciting, especially to improve our tier-one instruction. So we present to you the Leading Lakers Fellowship.
So and when we talk about tier, note, just so we're all on the same, tier one, when you say tier one, what are we talking about when we say tier one?
So tier one is that classroom instruction from that regular ed teacher. So we just really want to be there to support that regular ed teacher with whatever needs. And we hope that this is going to be more personalized for them. And it's right here in our own district, among our own staff, that, you know, you learn, I think, better from one another anyway. So we're just excited to offer this.
And we were meeting today just after the principal's meeting and just talking about that tier one. And, and you know, if you can make that initial classroom instruction the best, then, you know, you have fewer students in RTI because they're getting it as they, as they, as it comes in that tier one. Mr. Gobby mentioned the AI, the artificial intelligence, such a powerful tool for our teachers. You know, you can take a real simple example. You can take a passage that's written at the high school level, and maybe you have a student that's in your classroom that's in special education. There's a plethora of sites that you can tell that, put it in there and say, you know, make this on a third grade level. And do, and you know, that's just, that's just scratching, that's not even scratching the surface. But there's so many tools. And one of, maybe Ms. Heather said it first, or whoever said it first, about developing our own teachers, empowering our own teachers. And then I like what one of you said about just that family and unity, and we're all sharing it to where we're building ourselves up, growing our own and making it better. And this is never intended to come back and keep it, you know, throughout your, your six sessions, PLCs and otherwise, and we would share it, and that would grow within the building.
These will be leaders within their schools to help with all the different sessions. We got the sessions kind of lined out and the different topics for all of them that all tie back into tier one.
So we're hiring them, but somebody's still going to leave that one out there.
No.
On instructional coaches, I'm going to do middle and high.
You're going to float.
We'll have one for each elementary and then Dr. Bartrug, middle and high. But that would be our next goal.
The one from each school, is this going to be like a regular classroom teacher or?
Yes, preferably not a brand-new teacher. They have, through Dr. Stowall and Western, we provide new teacher training for them. And preferably, you know, not someone that's not going to be around for multiple years to invest.
It's not for you next year, Colton.
However, you know, but there's, if you look down, we're going to present it to the teachers closing day. There's a QR code that they can scan, and they'll fill out an application for those that are interested in the program. And then we'll meet with the principals and let the principals look through the candidates on who they think is a good leading, yeah, capacity, positive culture.
Someone eager and excited and ready to share back with their schools.
So you want to touch on the, what we envision for the, I know it's not much, but for the $250 technology?
Yeah, so each, each one that, that is in the fellowship will get $250. This $250 will be for instructional or technological stuff for their classroom, any type of resources. It could be a program, it could be a device. But they will also have access to this at the beginning so that they can start immediately being able to purchase things that they need that they can use for the things they're learning in the session.
They kept trying to, I think we went through a few dates before we got one settled when you all were presenting this to me because they, they were at the KISTI, came up with this. And then they came back and met with Mrs. McFaul and Ms. Rexroth, and they were like, I forget who was trying to schedule it with me, but hey, they're wanting to meet with you. They're wanting to meet with you.
We're a little overly excited about it.
But it was an easy sale.
And hearing what Bowling Green City, the feedback that they've had from it when we were in that session, I don't know how we wouldn't want to do that and do it for our own district, our own community. It's just, it's a great opportunity.
That's why it's so beneficial to go.
To conferences, to learn, yes.
Learn something. Maybe not from a session, but you'll learn from somebody else.
And we got a whole bunch more from that session, but I know Ms. Skaggs and I were talking about just, just that one session. How excited we left from it was worth the whole conference, just right there. It was like, that was the golden nuggets. But I mean, there was, there was a lot more that.
And I appreciate each of you all finding this out and wanting to come back and say, we can do that. We'll do that. We're going to meet with our teachers, and we'll help develop them and do that. So.
They really talked about in the session we sat that day about professional learning sometimes can be not what I chose. If it's what my school chose, or, you know, and so they kind of asked people's opinions on what was the worst professional development you've ever been to. And a lot of people shared different, I guess, experiences. But this is going to be so tailored to their own specific needs after we meet and after we, you know, gain knowledge of our individual teachers that are chosen. And so I think it'll be a great opportunity for the learning and that growth.
And they wanted, in the IMPACT survey at all the schools, they were asking for this type of PD. They were asking for the feedback. That's what they're telling us they want. So it was, everything was just perfect.
And all these half-day sessions, planning on doing the lunch and bringing them in and then just.
We want to hammer them up. We want them to know how special they are.
And you had Mr. Scott Thompson, the CEO of the hospital, come in. And something that he said was very powerful. He said, I want to make it impossible to fail. Make it so your staff feels like it's impossible to fail. So growing, you know, and really developing and investing in our teachers, especially teachers that have chosen a different route to teaching and didn't have that educational background, is going to be important for them.
Ms. Heather's referencing, and I think it was the March Chamber of Commerce meeting, our hospital CEO, Mr. Thompson, had spoke at the chamber meeting. And it was great. And I texted him while he was up there talking. I said, I want you at our next principal meeting, if you can, to come and say the same thing. And he agreed, and he came and spoke at our April principal meeting and administrators' meeting. And thank you for bringing that up. Great, great community partner, and yeah. Anything else, or Ms.? Nope, nope. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
So again, I appreciate their enthusiasm. So I recommend approval of the Leading Lakers Fellowship as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Selby? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Thank you all. And thank you all again.
This one was wild.
Next item on the agenda is volleyball funding request.
So we think we have some representatives here for our volleyball team? Come on up. Jackie said he can't hear you.
It sure isn't important enough to get him up here.
They've got a softball game on their mind, too.
Do apologize for our address.
No, that's all Laker-y. That's all Laker-y. I text the coaches earlier.
So we have been very fortunate to be able to get our own locker room for the girls at the high school. Talking with the starter, Bishop Carpenter, and several others was involved in that. And they've currently always shared the basketball locker room, I guess even way back when, I'm not sure. But there is a space for them to have their own locker room. So we're just asking for some funding. It needs lockers. Yeah, there's nothing really in it. Just need some lockers, new flooring, new paint, new ceilings, and things like that. And our volleyball budget was really slim up until last year. We worked really, really hard to get our booster money back to where it needed to be. With that being said, it took a lot out of it from last year. So we're just asking for a little assistance to help get that locker room up and going at the high school for our girls. We just like deserve that opportunity to have their own space.
We've got several parents that are willing to help do the work that we do part of.
Man, the work.
Yeah.
She's probably speaking for Reggie when she says that. She probably.
And we've, we've put a funding amount in. And we've, we've put a funding amount in there, so the boosters are gonna pick up the additional amount on whatever goes above and beyond what we requested. And some of that may be overkill on what, you know, we just have to do an estimate because we don't have official numbers.
Where is your, the location?
It's, I'm not sure.
The Wave Boys team, so by, next to Teresa's old room.
Okay.
Yeah.
You definitely need your own space.
Absolutely, and where we've been sharing the girls' basketball, they just renovated theirs, and so we're the only team that have, they have to share that, and our, our seasons kind of overlap a lot, so. Last year we had 28 volleyball, so just, we'd just be grateful for anything that you can do to help offset any of that, just have a perfect in the space.
We're just excited about volleyball, it's a, it's an upcoming sport, it's always been a good sport, but it just seems to like be a lot more interest and a lot more rivalry teams and stuff like that.
In Kentucky right now.
Right, yes, it's just a big deal right now.
So their estimate, and you all have that in your board packet, was for the lockers and wood for the lockers, $4,000, paint for the walls, brushes and rollers, $1,000, ceiling painted and labor, $800, flooring, $2,500, wire shelving for storage, $1,500, and stools for players, $2,500. And a lot of those folks that I'm sure helped come up with that estimate are in the field, it wouldn't be me coming up with numbers, you know, yeah, he knows, he knows what you're looking at.
Yes.
I love how you motivate me.
And we hope to get a little money donated, we haven't done all that process yet, I'm sure that we want to donate.
I guess so. So that, that total is $12,300, and when Ms. Roy and I had met, she's the booster treasurer, we talked about that $7,500 number of, it's a part of it in the boosters.
The shelving, because in that storage, the shower area, we talked about shelving, and then the stools, which, you know, that was probably had on, you know, the folding ones that they hang inside the lockers, so some of that probably was added on, so if we, if we will make...
Will the boosters have enough to offset the balance of?
Right now, no.
We just got a fundraiser. We, we just like to do a lot of things during this season for the girls, you know, they go on a couple overnight tournaments, and that, you know, causes for hotel expenses and food, and then we just recently, this past year, went on a fall break trip with those girls. And just some other things, if we like to feed them a few games and different things like that, so our booster money gets tied up pretty quick, but we'll make it work however it needs to be.
And the trip, I'm sure you're looking at, well, I know you are, for Florida again, yep.
I think that's like...
Yeah, but it's in here.
Yes.
But that's, that's one of the fundraising things, I'm saying, that costs money.
Yes, that costs money.
So my recommendation, I had recommend that the Russell County Board of Education allocate $7,500 towards the remodel of the volleyball locker room. We would not, we wouldn't, that would not be, I would have maintenance and stuff work directly with, if you all approve that, with them, because we don't, as a school entity, we wouldn't pay out money directly to a boosters, but we could certainly help renovate the room, you see what I'm saying, we couldn't, we wouldn't write a check to the boosters.
Like if there's a bill for floor covering, that bill would just have to...
Well, we would do the P O and requisition on the front end, instead of, we would not be allowed to pay the boosters, but we can do that need that's, that's there.
I'll say that. I'll make the motion. Oh, I'll say.
Oh, you did? I didn't.
Oh, I missed it, too.
So you're second, Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
All right. Whoever wants to get with me, and we can get that, I'm looking at all three of you one time. Okay, but I mean, just purchase orders, and so we have it clean from the get-go.
Okay.
Call our talk to Lloyd's tape. They don't start since... Not Lloyd's, we can always see, yeah, the girl starts it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is fiscal year '25 salary schedules.
So this, the salary schedules here are action item 11, our budget, that would be subsequent to this on the number 12 for our budget, and then we'll do the final budget or the working budget in September. That budget is predicated upon this recommendation that I'm proposing tonight for the salary schedule, so let me say that, that first, and you all know this, annually, we have to approve salary schedules, that's, that's a, that's a given. And then they go into effect at July 1, I mean, it's by policy and by statute. So this, this salary schedules that we're proposing, so let me say a few things. The legislature increased SEEK, we all know that, that supports education excellence in Kentucky, they increased funding for transportation, and they even are gonna do a reimbursement for districts if they have agreements for some SROs, up to $25,000 per SRO. So having said all that, this 4%, there was no mandated raise from the state that was put down. They didn't say everybody gets a 3% raise, or everybody gets a 4% raise, none of that. They gave the districts money, everybody's, every district's situation is different, and they gave the districts money, and they said, "You all spend it how you think, you know, it's best." There's no greater asset, our students, second to that would be our faculty and staff, they make it work. And so this, this salary increase takes every bit of what we're getting extra from the state, and then a little bit more of our, of our contingency. Plus, we all know that everything goes up in a year. You know, our insurance, we've got a good workers' comp premium, I've not given you all our property and liability premium yet, I don't even have it yet, but it's gonna be up significantly. You all know food cost goes up, electricity bill goes up, so I say all of that, we can give this 4% raise, use every bit of the additional funds that we're getting from the state, albeit it is likely still to decrease our contingency some. We've got a healthy contingency, and I wouldn't advise a 4% if I didn't think that we could afford it. Having said that, in fiscal year '26, we will get another SEEK increase from the state, the other finish up the part of the transportation, again, to where, if everything goes well, number to be determined, but we would, should be able to give another raise in fiscal year '26 without just throwing our contingency to the wind. You know, I would love to look at our faculty and staff, even those that are present here this evening, and say, 10, 12, 20, Lord knows they all deserve it, from everyone, from our bus drivers and custodians, to our teachers, to our admin. I don't think that's fair, to do that, knowing that we can't pay that right now. Furthermore, we could pay it for maybe a year or two down the road, you can always take so much from a contingency, and you will be in trouble. I've been in the district where times have not been as good as what they are right now, and we have a balancing act, I think, as superintendent, as a board, to be physically responsible, to certainly reward our employees to the extent that we can, and still be prepared if we have hard times. You know, I've been here to where we received a mid-year SEEK cut, so let's say that the state said you're getting $100, and then in the middle of the year, they said, "Never mind, it's only $75." Those times are tough, but you can have those times if you have a healthy contingency, to which we have. Again, this will take into part of that, but nothing that would not be of concern to me as a superintendent. It is representative across the board for a 4% increase, and then we have touched some of those individuals on some of the, on some of the athletic that will sow out of whack on some of the other, on the extra service salary schedule. So a 4% from, you know, across the board, from our teachers, to our custodians, to our bus drivers, that all, that all goes up a 4%. Again, the budget that's presented next is encompassing this approval of the 4% salary schedule. So I know a lot of districts gave, or some districts gave more, some districts gave less, I'm comfortable with this. I would love to be able to give our employees more, but to be, to be responsible, I think this is a happy medium, if you will. So be happy to, anything else that you all need to hear?
When you give a high increase, you've got to continue.
You're not gonna go back.
You can't take it back.
No.
You can't take it back, so.
No. No. And again, there was no mandate, you know, from the state.
Some of these school districts are gonna get behind the eight ball with these large increases at one time, and continue, and have to continue to do that year after year.
And I will, I'll want to say this publicly, I do sincerely appreciate and thank Representative Branscombe and Senator Gerdler for the increase. You know, there have been times before where we've got no increase in SEEK or a decrease in transportation funding. We didn't get everything we wanted in the budget as far as state and, and funding goes, we talked about today at the principal's meeting, and then just the expectations of training our staff, but we do not have professional development funds, do we, Mrs. McFaul, for that? They have no funding allocation for that, which I still shake my head with that, you know, they say do this, X, Y, and Z, but we, they didn't fund any PD again this year. I think it's over a million dollars, you know, we spent with ARP funds for textbooks in this district. We have no textbook funding, instructional materials like that from the state like we had before, so there's those things will have to be encompassed, too. But I answer any other questions, but I recommend adoption of the attached salary and extra service salary schedules for fiscal year '25 as presented.
Make that motion. Is there a second? Gerald? Gerald, yeah, Gerald's...
Gerald, Ms. Murray did?
Gerald.
You second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is fiscal year '25 tentative budget.
As you all well know, we have three budget cycles, in January, we have our draft, in May, by the end of May, we have to submit our tentative budget, and then in September, we submit what's called our, our working budget, we work off that budget for the remainder of the school year, and by that time, all of our numbers are firmed up from the state. Right now, we're, we're still working off the tentative SEEK allocations and things like that from the state, but by come September, those numbers are all firmed up. So our fiscal year '25 budget expenditures and revenues, $25,945,938. And again, that will be presented again in September, once we have the final budgets. It has included in, of course, like I said, it encompasses the 4% raise, that's what this budget, the budget is billed upon. As we've done for another number of years, we can purchase school buses straight out, it, you know, encompasses all those things like that, our resource officers and all those extra things that's kind of been added throughout the year, that's encompassed, or throughout the years, rather, that's been encapsulated in, in this budget. So we have to submit this to the state by the end of this, by the end of this month. I've got that note there, again, September 30th is when the next one is due.
I make the motion.
Second?
I'll say.
Second, Joyce. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item is Russell County Schools, School Year '20, '24, '20, '25 Certified Evaluation Plan.
Mrs. McFaul, do you have anything to add to this?
We chose to make no changes. It appears like sometimes that, hey, what are y'all doing in that committee? But it's just a thing that we do in the spring, we nominate administrators and teachers to come together and meet, it's an opportunity for people to talk to them about any concerns or issues they may have. And the last four years when we have met, there have been no concerns or issues, but it's, we always give them that opportunity to give their voice. There were no changes that were mandated by the state, and I think that can show the hard work that's gone to it in the past, because it is a well-written plan, and people feel good about it. So that's why our committee, again, this year, just chose to make the changes even as is.
So little, just change the year and the names are about some of the only things that we've done from previous school year. So I recommend approval of the Russell County Schools Certified Evaluation Plan, along with accompanying assurances.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion to effect. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Selby. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is contracts, memorandums of agreements.
Okay, we have two from the Lake Cumberland District Health Department that they've done with this in the past, the Sexual Risk Avoidance Education Positive Program, Positive Potential for 69th, Somerset Community College, the Dual Credit MOA, and our fiscal year '24 Independent Auditor Contract. So I recommend approval of the contracts and, and/or memorandums of agreements that's been approved by the Board Attorney.
He says action taken. We're in the, we're in the, making the motion, I'm saying, it's already on.
What? They said the action's already listed.
It's already listed.
Yeah, it was.
Kind of, we're a copy, no.
No, it's not.
Oh.
It can be bad.
Yep. Well... No, sometimes on agenda items, we can copy, so we don't have to retype it on e-meeting, and we probably didn't deselect the action items.
It showed up on mine at home, that it was already approved of some of the items.
Now, not fixed, it's gonna update it.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
And I'll say.
Okay. Is there a vote?
Hey, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Yeah, we copies things over, so we don't have to redo it. There's a feature in e-meeting to do that, and if you don't deselect action, then it carries over the motion stuff. Well, no, it's not, it's a premonition, who's gonna make the motion? It's fixed when, when she makes it.
Next item on the agenda is professional leave of absence.
So Mr. Joe Wolford, he previously served as our Library and Media Specialist at Russell Springs Elementary School, you all get this request each year, he's been serving as Kentucky Education Association Vice President for a number of years, his current term began June 15th of 2022, and it's gonna continue through June 14th, 2025. He's requesting another professional leave of absence for the '24, '25 school year, and it's unpaid, there's nothing associated with us for the school district, it's just that you all would grant him this absence. There's no pay or anything like that from the school district. I recommend the Russell County Board of Education grant Joe, Mr. Joe Wolford a professional leave of absence without pay for the '24, '25 school year.
You're gonna get Eric's second.
Ms. Carol, they're just playing along. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item is fundraiser approval.
The following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the listed fundraiser, Russell County High School, the Russell County High School yearbook for current events, recommend approval of the school-wide fundraiser for Russell County High School.
How much is year roof?
Forty-five.
I think there's ten or something, I want to see.
Need a... I'll make the motion. Well, I'll say.
Is that who's on there?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
See, I don't look at that part.
All right. Next item is out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
The following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state and overnight trips, June 3rd to the 7th, Russell County High School Basketball Team for Foley High School Summer Camp in Foley, Alabama. June 24th through the 29th, Skills USA National Competition in Atlanta, Georgia. June 25th to the 28th, HOSA International Leadership Conference in Houston, Texas. And then, as the volleyball team referenced, October 3rd to the 9th, Russell County High School Volleyball, Volleyball Tournament in Fort Walton Beach, Destin, Florida. If you all noticed the past several months, we've had so many of our clubs and groups that have qualified for national competition. And here's two more, you know, Skills USA going to for national competition, and then the HOSA is going to that International Leadership Conference, and our, our students have just had a lot of awesome opportunities, and they've just done so well, and their advisors have worked so well, you know, to get them there.
Ms. Tarr wondered if maybe we need to purchase a plane?
Purchase a plane?
Just to take.
Charter our students, yeah, that's pretty awesome.
If they're going.
Yeah.
Put Russell County. Yeah. Put a big anchor on the side.
I make a motion.
Mr. Joy?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Take care.
Vote? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
Enjoy. Next item is proposal request number six, Old Area Technology Center renovation project, fiber optic cable rerouting.
This is a significant need that Mr. Bell identified as work was starting over here at the old ATC, and I'll defer to him, kind of explain the issue.
First one goes across from the middle school cafeteria overhead to the vocational school. There's an old pole there, and then where the new building's, it's going to look like a new building, there's a big pole across up top, which looks like crap.
Crap.
So that needs to be put underground, moved over. And then the building, the fiber that goes to the maintenance back in the back, that's attached to main, don't even know how in the world it's working, or was working, because they had 90-degree turns. Anyway, it's overhead back in the back, too. What they're going to do back there is put a ditch underground, so it'll all be underground. Can't be hit by any trucks or anything else. Same for the fiber that goes from the main ATC to the ROTC alternative building, is the one that comes overhead right out of the front of the building, straight at the very end of the ROTC building, which looks like a building. It's a big cable.
Yeah.
Of course, with the new building, that's going to be hanging there unless we, you know, do change it. Of course, it'll be out in the back underground in the inside.
You noted that, didn't you know how that one was even working?
Yeah.
That fiber cable. So we can fix this, and Mr. Bell worked with the contractor that's currently on site, because they do this work as well, to get this price, to change all three areas and fix it as it really needs to be fixed. And it's one of them things, if we don't fix it now while we're doing the building, we'll never fix it right, because we won't want to be able to spend the money. And we can take it out of the project's contingency. It's $32,726.27, but fiber is high. It's expensive to work and to work with, but it fixes it, it fixes it and fixes it right on all three locations to do that. So I recommend approval of proposal request number six for the Old Area Technology Center renovation project, authorized superintendent forward to complete the change order.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Gerald, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is Family Resource Youth Service Center Reconfiguration, additional FRC director.
So good news for Russell County Schools, that we, Mrs. Dameron, her team submitted another, what we call a reconfiguration request to the state, and they accepted it and provided the funding to where now each of our schools will have a full-time Family Resource Center Director. So we gave, this, this would be splitting up Jamestown and Salem. They were together, sharing one. That director, we kind of gave the choice as to which spot she wanted to go to. So she's going to stay at Salem. She lives in that area anyway, and that would leave the new position then for Jamestown Elementary School. So pending your all's approval, we would post a position for Jamestown Elementary School. So we would have one for Russell Springs, Jamestown, Salem High School, and the middle school. So we would have one for each of our, each of our schools would have a full-time director. Mrs. Dameron, anything to add to that?
Knowing that no cost to the district.
Yep. The full, full funding comes with it to pay for that salary and.
Providing funds for it.
Yep. So they've done really well by Family Resource Center the past several years. Kevin was aware that we'd got this, Kevin Williams, and he was tickled as well, and it's, I think you all know and value and appreciate the work the Family Resource Centers directors do, the need that they have. I was out here the other day, and one of the resource officers, Mr. Cleet, had flagged me down. There's a lady there, because tomorrow is going to be from 11:00 to 12:30 is the, I think that's right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is, tomorrow on Tuesday, 11:00 to 12:30, you can come to the pantry, and it's a drive-through food giveaway. But this lady thought that it was last Tuesday, and she was out there, and I said, you're, you're needing some food, though. I said, it's, I said, you just got your week messed up, and she did. So what did I do? I just called on the Family Resource Center. They called me and opened up the pantry, and that's kind of unique to us, too. Not every Family Resource Centers have a pantry. We've been funded for that for another year, for that, and so Kevin Williams' funds does supplement our pantry. But that's another, just another example of the things that people drive by up and down the road, don't realize happens in our school districts, you know, have a pantry to give kids food. So middle school and high school kids, they can actually get food from the pantry, and the other ones, elementary schools, they come here with their parents or whatever and get, get food. They got freezers and refrigerators and all that stuff like that in there.
I had made Keith, the construction manager, aware of that.
Yes, he knew, too. I told him, too.
And he said, wherever it takes, I'll move these guys out, go make a spot, and they'll, and they'll, they'll just set it up, call it in, do a drive-through, don't have to get out of the vehicle. He was all about it. He said, we will, we will make that happen.
So 11:00 to 12:30 tomorrow. Just drive through and get food. So with your all's approval, we will post the job description and this new position for Jamestown Elementary School. Ms. Reed will probably get it up tomorrow, knowing her, if you all approve it, and then we could hire, we would hire in the month of June and get that posted, and I'm going to get it ready for the new school year. And they would have their own Family Resource Center Director as well. So I recommend approval of the Russell County Schools Family Resource Youth Service Center Reconfiguration and the additional Family Resource Center Director position, position.
I'll make that motion.
Crazy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joyce. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
I do want to note, and I know the media has the information and things, too, but we're also doing the summer feeding, and families can pick up seven days' worth of food. And it'll kind of be like some, not to bring up the time, but during COVID, when we had frozen things, the frozen pizzas and things like that, it'll be some of that. But families can pick that up this summer for each child, and that, each child gets a gallon of milk for the week. So if you had a family of four, it'd be four gallons of milk and then food for them. And the high school will have hot meals each day, but we'll have locations at each of the elementary schools, the library, and the city park of one day a week to get the seven-day meal kits, too. So doing that through the summer feeding program with the lunchroom.
Next item on the agenda is revised job description, Family Resource Youth Service Center Assistant.
Okay, this is revised job description. The Russell Springs Family Resource Center, of course, they're a larger number, and they can still support an instructional, or not instructional assistant, but assistant to the program. So with their funding, they can have, this contract is revised job description for that center assistant. This will be specific to Russell Springs Elementary School. You all can see the outlines of that. And one note of change, some of them have been before, it's 184 days, it's seven hours per day, okay? It's 184 days, seven hours per day. So the center directors, they work 240 days, and the assistant will not, the budget can't support that much, but there's a full-time assistant there with that. Anything you want to add to that, Mrs. Dameron?
Mine, mine.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's no cost.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the Family Resource Center budget coverage. It's nothing that's coming out of, out of general fund. There was a time, talking about how far the states came, come, things come through 60, but we were supplementing, the board was, out of general fund, just to make the salary of the Family Resource Center Directors. But the state's done really well with that over the past several years.
Our grant this year is going to be $4,222, no, $422,100, and it leaves in excess about $100,000 for the centers to, to split between themselves and to do things like this.
But then you take people, boots on the ground, coupled with Kevin Williams' money, and you can do good things for kids and families. Yeah. So I recommend approval of the revised Family Resource Youth Service Center Assistant Job Description for initial contracts after July 1, 2024. Just a note that this after July 1, because we currently have an assistant employed, that would be under the old contract, where she works more than 184 days.
I'll make a motion to that effect. I'll second it.
Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
Okay. Workers' Compensation Insurance for School Year '20, '24, '25.
Okay, this quote from Howson, it continues with our current group that we have with KIMI, which is Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance. I know any increase is a bad increase, but to have an increase of just $2,216, so it's our estimated premium of $70,513, is very good. And we have a, what's referred to as a good mod rate. That means just the number of accidents and how high the claim was. Our, kudos to our faculty and staff for just using safe practices and being careful. Some things we can't help, accidents happen, and then some things, you know, sometimes we're careless and do things that we shouldn't. But just really kudos to our faculty and staff. And I'll point to Ms. Teresa, too. The nurses play a big role in that, because you all report them all through the nurse's hotline. So the company actually kind of triages, don't they, Ms. Teresa, through the phone? So if I were to fall right here and it's during the school day, I'd get over there, and Ms. Teresa would call, and it's a nurse that you reported to, MedCor, I think is the name, and they kind of triage and say, we'll do X, Y, Z. Obviously, if I'm bleeding out, somebody would probably just take me on to the hospital. But if it's just minor stuff, you have, you kind of do what the nurse suggests. But we don't, if someone says, I'm going to the doctor, we don't fight that either. But they kind of triage stuff, and it's worked out pretty well. Yeah. But it's reported through the telephone with the nurse. So I recommend the Russell County Schools continue using Howson's Insurance Group for Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance, KIMI, for workers' compensation insurance for school year '24, '25. And again, I already mentioned, our general liability and property coverage should have them by the next board meeting. They're literally working them up. It's not just going to be a Russell County thing. It's just that Kentucky's and school districts, between the tornadoes in the west and floods in the east, the three primary carriers, really, there's just two primary carriers, they're still trying to recoup losses, and everybody's going to pay for it.
I bet they are.
Everybody's going to pay for it. Significant increases that's coming with that.
Need a motion? I'll make a motion to that effect. Is there a second? Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
And the calendar. I don't know.
Next item on the agenda is the amended 2023, 2024 school calendar.
So we just amended the school year calendar. It does note our NTI days that we, we had in the district. This is our current school calendar, as well as the early dismissal that was utilized during the inclement weather on May 8th, and there's nothing else. This is really just more of a formality. The board approves it, notes those days. Mrs. Dameron submits it, and there's no making up those emergency hours that we left early that day or anything like that. So I recommend approval of the '23, '24 school calendar as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is personnel reports.
So Mr. Zach Smith hired as Jamestown Elementary School Principal. We really look forward to working with, with Mr. Smith. Jamie McCary resigned as Jamestown Elementary School Special Education Teacher. Kristy Campbell transferred from Jamestown to Russell County High School as an LBD teacher. The next one's Colton Grader. He's hired as that Jamestown Elementary School P5 teacher. Kami Mounts hired as Russell Springs Elementary School Custodian. Joyce Wilson resigned as Russell Springs Elementary School Cook and Cashier. Sharon Gaskins resigned as Russell Springs Elementary School Preschool Instructional Assistant. Alexandria Brown resignation as Russell County Middle School Head Softball Coach. Kyle Blue resignation as a Russell County Middle School sixth-grade girls' basketball coach. Josh Smith transferred from Jamestown Elementary School to Russell County Middle School as Special Education Teacher. Sharon Gilbert resigned, Russell County Middle School Cook and Cashier. David Lewis transferred from Alternative School to Russell County High School as a teacher. Felicia Van Arsdale transferred from Russell County High School Intervention Teacher to our, to our Alternative Programs Department. Lucas Ford transferred from Russell County High School Special Education Teacher to Special Education Teacher at the Laker Success Academy. Ben Avril hired, Russell County High School MSD student aide. Tyler Ford resignation, Russell County High School Assistant Football Coach. Sharon Gaskins hired as substitute. Christina Bunch, Russell County High School Special Education Teacher, end of year 6/30/2024, non-renewal. Trina Jones, Jamestown Elementary School Intervention Teacher, end of year 6/30/2024, non-renewal. Ellie Richard, Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant, end of year 6/30/2024, non-renewal. Denise Lauder, Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant, end of year 6/30/2024, non-renewal. Josh Root, Salem Elementary School Instructional Assistant, end of year 6/30/2024, non-renewal. And Rhonda Hammond, Salem Elementary School Instructional Assistant, retiring effective July 1, 2024.
And some of these non-renewals could be hired back, is that right?
Yes, they're all, they're all, there's nothing, any of those non-renewals, there's none of them, they're all eligible for hired back. Most every single one of them was just that they were paid with the ARP Escher funds, and those funds are no more. Yeah. So, and they knew that when they were hired for those positions. Yeah. And a lot of them have worked their way into other positions, and these, some of these made very well.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Does anybody have a public comment? Ms. Grady?
I have a question, because I don't know if I heard this one, or I was daydreaming and dreamt it, but did you say we spent $100 million, or not $100, $8 million for textbooks?
Yes, we have, over the course of the funding for the ARP funds. Yep.
What happens to those textbooks? That's really what I'm getting at, because it, my learning method when I was in school and wanting to learn, is I needed a book, and we don't.
Don't you have one with you right now?
Well, I always, I have actually two more.
Okay.
But, but my point is, is that, you know, I've never seen a book that was available, maybe my six children that have gone through this district, just didn't want them. But are they available to the children to go home, or?
Well, oftentimes now, because they are so expensive and there's not funds allocated, we oftentimes buy classroom sets, to where not all of them have individual sets, do they, Ms. Reed, but sometimes they do now. In the past, but with this fund, they are individual books. Yeah.
For the child, yes.
Prior to that, though, Mr. Onion, we were buying classroom sets, but the past.
Was it for this year, or?
The, the Escher money did, not for every grade.
No.